Call this meeting to order, council regular session April 4th. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Okay, before we go to visitor comments, I'm gonna, uh, I got an award to present for Budget Committee Member, Patrick Burke, Burke Lee. A member since January 2012. He participated in six budget cycles for the city, which is approximately three to five meetings each year. He reviewed and provided critical input on the budget along with making sure the budget contributed to the city council achieving their goals. We thank him for his volunteer, for his time in making sure the city has well-balanced budget. And he continues to help us out, so Patrick, this is well deserved.
I don't know, I don't know how I'll do the budget without you Patrick.
Patrick and I go way back, we were on the school board together, and I hope we're in a lot of other enterprises together.
Alright. Okay, we're gonna open it up for visitor comments. Uh, can you come up and, uh, state your name for the record?
Yeah, to make comments, we just need you at the microphone so everybody can hear you.
Good evening, I'm Rosemary Clement. I live at 155 South First Street, the Jensen's house. And, um, it's an open letter, and that, I'm gonna give you copies when I'm done. So I titled it, "We Can Do Better." City council needs to be accountable as to what is happening with anyone they have hired to do work for in the city. That includes communicating to us, the citizens, when we simply ask, "What is going on?" I wrote an email to Mayor Rick Scholl and asked to meet with him and never got a response back. I was told by a city council member to go to Ms. Curry to get answers in regards to what's going on in the waterfront. I do not feel that making me go to Tina Curry to get information on what is happening with her oversight is acceptable. She is not an elected official. I'm worried that she's been given CARP launch to do as she sees fit in the city's events. I also find that unacceptable. Second, I personally do not want the spirit of Halloween Town promoted throughout the year with displays or events. I do not want to become a town only known for spirit of Halloween Town. I feel it cheapens the city and its reputation. Third, we need a timeline on when something is going to be moving on improving the waterfront, the riverfront. It is our greatest asset. No other town on the Columbia has the potential to be a center for recreation and tourism as ours does. I would like the city to put tourism dollars into an outdoor recreation focus. Four, and lastly, our county is gaining an incredible opportunity in Omeck in Scappus. Coming to Scappus. It is the only one of its kind in the country. But Scappus does not have a beautiful downtown and waterfront to draw people to live and recreate. We can become the bedroom community as Omeck grows into a large economic force. We will benefit from Omeck if we provide a beautiful community for people to choose to live in. Let's do a better job together.
Anybody care to comment? No.
Don't wait.
Okay. Go ahead.
Alright, good evening, my name's Charlie Castner. Um, different last name, but I'm the husband of the wonderful woman that just spoke to y'all. I don't wanna belabor the point, um, but also wanted to offer my, I guess, opinions, um, some requests, also of the city. I too, the whole thing with the, one, I just don't understand the whole Stonehenge thing, even when it was up at Halloween Town. Didn't really care for it that much then, and sure as heck don't care for it being, you know, where it is right now, blocking the view. Uh, as my wife said in one of her points, you know, we've got such an amazing opportunity with all the natural resources that we have available here. I was very happy to read in the paper, I guess it was last week, of Mayor Scholl about you wanting to try to talk about, and I see it on the agenda for tonight in terms of a ferry service. I think the idea of that, you know, doing things, getting across, and even for Sand Island, the use of that could be something great. Um, Rosemary's youngest son visited us a few weeks ago, and the comment he made, and he's been over on Sand Island with us during the the summertime, is that that place could be, you could have a outdoor, you know, rope score, some kind of adventure, something like that. I'd like to see us look at kind of a long-term strategy on what we're gonna do, and not become the city of having these events as just Halloween Town, or the, I still don't understand exactly what it is that's coming up, um, in May. Uh, and the details have been, you know, very sketchy, I understand some details did come out last week. I guess it was last week, where I've been gone, just got back in last night, uh, and everything else. And I understand that Tina Curry has a lot of, you know, things going on. Um, you all may have great communications with her. Um, for an outsider trying to communicate with Tina Curry, it's not a fun event. She's not the most approachable person. She doesn't communicate very well, she communicates in a very dictatorial style. Um, so if, you know, if the advice is for us to go talk to Tina about things, then I would suggest or ask that you all have a discussion with her, and, uh, see if she can be a little bit more approachable then. Uh, I understand she has hired somebody on staff who's a very, very, uh, sweet person to talk to. Um, but then she's also controlled by what information Tina is allowed, or is allowing her to give out. Um, I think we've just got a lot of potential in this city. I'm a, as you can tell, as I talk longer, that I'm not from around here. Uh, moved here, you know, a couple years, a little bit over two years ago.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, and we have fallen in love with the city. Uh, it's a fantastic place, uh, and we just wanna see, you know, kind of a vision and really look at it, and just have a concern, my, we got involved with Tina on some Halloween Town activities last year that my wife was wanting to get involved with and do, and just, it was very, very rough dealing with her. You know, our neighbor, who's a fantastic person that, you know, lives in the house right next to us, I can't remember the, whose house that was, but I think she was a teacher, uh, up on, up on the bluff. Um, you know, he tried, he's very involved with the reserves here. He tried to get them to have a, you know, a, I guess, a bounce house or something like that, that the reserves have. Just do it, it's something to offer, the thing, and, "Well, no, you can't, then we'll let you do that, but you're gonna have to pay $5,000." And for an outfit like from the government, like that, nonprofit, to offer something, then be told you have to pay that mu- much money to even be able to do something where you're not charging anything, you're not doing anything, you're offering it as a service for the kids, I found to be very unacceptable. Um, so, that's all I have to say. Thank y'all.
Thank you. Any other visitor comments?
My name's Brady Preheim, but I'm reading the letter from my aunt who's sick. Nancy Whitney at 40 Wagner Avenue. She wrote, "I regret, I will be unable to attend the council meeting tonight. My husband Ed and I are in urgent care last night. He has pneumonia and I have a lung infection, and we are pretty much housebound for a few days. I have nothing to contribute in the way of ideas to help Columbia County cities get back on a good financial footing. I depend on our elected councils to provide this support. I also depend on our elected officials to assure me that these agencies they oversee will provide me with open, honest government, since these agencies are in charge of spending my money. When I walk into a city office and I am told I do not have the right to certain information because it's secret and confidential, that raises the hackles on my, on the back of my neck. Under Oregon law, I have that right. I was not asking for personal information or information on real estate. I was asking why a section of land I helped pay for was fenced off, marked private, no trespassing, being gravelled by city employees, and having the Styrofoam Stonehenge re-erected. And I was hit in the face with secret and confidential by a city employee. Come on, Mr. Mayor and St. Helens City Councilperson, this is not how I want my city, county, state, and country to be seen, and hopefully neither do you. Please set your employees straight on what secrets they can and can't keep. Thank you." So that was her letter. Uh, I'm just gonna add my own part, 'cause although it's, she's my aunt, I don't always agree with her. Um, I, I don't, I don't think this issue has to do with, uh, before last Friday, it's the first time I met Tina. I think she's doing a fantastic job, frankly. Um, the fact that she's turned Halloween Town into the event it was after seventeen years of this movie doing nothing tells me she is very confident. Um, I guess my criticism would probably be more with Mr. Walsh. It's just not secret information, if somebody comes in, and for somebody that's been in retail for years, I understand that sometimes those pesky public can be annoying when you're busy. But if somebody comes in, again, it wa- it was public, I mean, it wasn't, it's not secret information, and I, and I think you just didn't wanna spend the time to go through what has been out there. And frankly, I think that's what your job is, I mean, and sometimes, and, and not just your job, but the whole council. And, and I think that, you know, that's part of, being part of the city, is that sometimes you have little old ladies coming in here wanting to know what's going on, and they don't wanna go back and read the newspaper, or look on Facebook, or look on the internet. They want to hear it directly. And I, I think that communication really does lie on you. I don't think that should rely on people having to go directly to Tina. I think it should come from the city. And I'd also just add, uh, one other thing about, about the, uh, meeting that you held, where, uh, whether it's in debate, whether it was a quorum or not. Again, I don't put that on Tina, I put that on you. Um, you, you know, if two of you had come, it wouldn't have been a problem. When the third of you shows up, you know the, the rules and the laws. I think you violated public meeting law. I, and I think that one of you should have left, and so that you never had a quorum. And I, and I think that in the future, you need to be aware of that, and be aware of who's there, and, uh, don't even look like you are, uh, trying to violate the public meeting law.
Any other visitor comments? Okay. Your mic's not on. Um, so I'd just like to say, I apologize for not responding to your email. Um, to anybody out there who wants to get ahold of me, um, if you're watching this meeting, um, sometimes people do watch this meeting on Channel 29, that's where we're located. Uh, my cellphone is the best way to get ahold of me. I always answer or return phone calls. The email, I think I just, I looked at it, got probably wrapped up. I get a gazillion emails on a bunch of, sometimes just a lot of advertisement when you're a city, a mayor of a city. Um, and it gets really overwhelming, to be honest with you. Um, Halloween Town is not gonna be a year-long event. Um, and we have been talking about this festival, the Festival of Fairies, for, uh, probably at least four different meetings, um, since last summer. Uh, it was an idea back then, and it has been brought up at least four times in council work sessions. Now, I don't know what else we could do, I mean, she's doing her job, and we're here doing our job, we're not, we're not hiding that. And, uh, um, so, it is all public information. The perception of, uh, what happened down here at the merchants meeting, I would just like to state for the record, it was not planned, there was no decisions made. Uh, it was a, uh, honest, um, mistake that will never happen again if, um, um, I just wanna let people know that, that, uh, there was no decisions made. I think I talked to Keith for just maybe a minute, and there was plenty of merchants there. There were plenty of people that seen that we weren't, you know, there was no decisions, Tina was running a meeting, wondering how she could deal with the vendor, the merchants, better. And what she could do. And she was asked to do stuff above her RFP, um, as far as reaching out to the yachting community and enticing them to come back. Listen, she was only hired to do, um, three major events, and we've added a bunch more. It was Christmas, Halloween Town, and, uh, uh, Thirteen Nights, no, Fourth of July, we, me and Keith actually were enabled to do it, and she took it over. And, uh, she's added the fairy, the Festival of the Fairies, and she's, in, out of her own pocket, uh, held these meetings with the merchants, and paid, uh, two businesses. I don't know how much, but I'm sure quite a bit, and we, you know, just rent a space and get catered for free. Um, so, on her behalf, um, she is definitely earning her money when it comes to events. You can come up to the microphone.
Uh, this is Rosemary again. Are we paying her more money to take over the other events?
No, no, all this is underneath that same.
Okay.
Yep.
The merchants have come out and said that they want more to build their business, they want city support in that regard. And that's where the events come from. It's not that we decide we wanna have events out here, but we have the space, and it brings people down here that shop and spend their money and eat in restaurants, and it helps at least have in the interim until the waterfront can be developed. Help keep the interest and keep shoppers down here and keep businesses open. Um, you know, and Thirteen Nights is awesome, and Fourth of July is awesome, but, you know, anybody that pays their overhead needs income every month, not just a few months of the year. And you, like you said, you can't do Halloween 365 days of the year.
So here's what happened. I'm gonna tell you the last, the first one she had had a good response. Me and Jenny were the only two there on this council. We showed up here and we said, "Wow, we are really blown away by how the meeting went, how it was conducted, how, um, we were surprised at how little some of the businesses knew what the city had going on." We thought, "It's all public information." Crystal does, Farnsworth does a very good job of putting it out there and letting people know what's going on, and, um, uh, so, the next one was coming up. Nobody had talked to anybody, at all. But we were so wanting to hear what our businesses had to say, and at random, we all showed up. And some had left, there was three of us there, you know, a couple different one time, but, uh, it was not planned. There was no hidden, there's no motive there. We're not making no decision. The, the spotlights grabbed the hold of it, and they wanna make a big deal out of it, and they called me again tonight trying to make a big deal out of this, and it's just flat-out ridiculous. I said, "Hook up the light detector test and, and question me, I'm an honest man." And, uh, um, you know, I'm, I'm doing your work as citizens. That's what I hired on to do, is be of service of my community. You can come up, Shawna.
My name is Shawna Strop Harrison, and I'm, I'm, in regards to the whole situation that, um, transpired down at the roof. Um, in light of that, and the idea that we want to bring more business to our merchants, and all the other things that are going and floating in everybody's heads, including Stonehenges that people aren't too happy about down on the waterfront, and making a bridge between the now and the development of the waterfront, and making it an option for us to procure more funds and to bring more things that we can do down there aside from just Halloween Town. You know, I've heard the re, we've been talking again now about a ferry, which I've been pro-ferry the whole time. Um, but, you know, it's, as a real estate agent and a person who's invested in real estate, we have cycles in real estate, there's a lot of different things going on right now. I'm very, very concerned about this big push to build a bunch of development on the front of our waterfront that is gonna not be sustainable, not affordable, and it's gonna end up being a hindrance, just like the South Waterfront was on Portland when the market changed. Um, I wanna see livability here, I see businesses closing left and right, I see all kinds of different things going on as an agent beating the streets and walking around some of these properties out there, including properties that have been burnt, people have been starved out, they're losing their homes 'cause insurance companies aren't paying, you know, I see it all. And the thing is, is that you guys work for the betterment of all of us, including yourselves. Most of you reside here, some of you don't, um, but...
We all do, all the counselors.
All of you are do?
It's a requirement.
Right, but not the city administrator.
Yes, yes.
So, anyways, so, um, back to the lecture at hand. I would like to see a real, I know you guys have got it as open forum right now, but a real coming to Jesus per se about the real trials and tribulations that face us as a area that is losing businesses. And so, I think that, you know, I've been told by all kinds of people in regards to the options of building like a moorage out there. You guys could rent it out, like the Island Cafe. There's a million different things that we could do, that of course, we need to bring in streets and infrastructure, yada, 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 but there's a million different other things that we could do.
Absolutely. Do you wanna bring, do you have somebody willing to come out here and do that? We have another third of the property available. That would be great.
Another third of the property?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're only working with the developer on part of the property, we have other property available.
Well, we've talked about this Shawna.
On the water.
We actually have talked about this a number of times, um, 'cause we do own the waterfront, and that little section, and we also own the strip going all the way up to the mill. Um, it always boils down to, um...
Money, everybody developing it, I get it, I know, I understand, I mean, clearly.
So, uh, what I can encourage people to do is, we've done a lot of work as a city, um, as far as, we're doing a, um, getting ready to do our second, um, riverfront corridor, um, meeting to do a study on Gable Road and Millard Road, and the county's involved. Um, we've done branding and wayfinding, we have urban renewal.
No, I mean, I've done a little bit of my, I, I, so, don't think that I don't think that you guys aren't doing due diligence.
Trying to announce it again in a meeting, this is the only outlet I have. Okay, so this is where I have to do it.
Okay.
And that's why I'm shocked when people say they didn't know this is going on. We have an urban renewal going on that has just been set in place, it's gonna take time. We are working with a developer, um, in pre-negotiations for this waterfront, and it is conceptual, the drawing that you see, but it's gonna stick closely to that. Um, the boardwalk, we were actually talking today about, um, getting, uh, some studies going on the, uh, boardwalk, the entire length of the property for our citizens. We know what we have here, and we know this is bigger than us. We understand that.
We've been listening.
Yes, yes, I mean, you know, I mean, this is for, the future of St. Helens, huge.
Yeah, but, I, okay, yeah, I, I'm not gonna waste a bunch of your guys' time tonight, I just wanted to get up and make, 'cause you know, I know there's been a lot of, you know...
So the developer we actually are in negotiation with is actually doing, has done many projects like this, Tokula, and they're actually currently, um, working with, uh, Independence, and I have talked to the mayor of Independence, John, and, uh, he's happy with what they have done so far. And, uh, their, their proposed investment on the one-third, or two-thirds of the property, not really, it's just a little over half, actually. Just a little over half is $50 million they're willing to invest in St. Helens. This is a big deal for St. Helens, okay?
I, I don't...
Yeah, that's a lot of money. I don't care who you are.
Yeah, no, I mean, yeah, but, I mean, I, we'll, we'll see. I mean, you could say build it, they're gonna come, but they're already coming, 'cause it doesn't matter, they're getting priced out of Portland, so... I mean, I get that people are here, but the bottom line is, as I said in my original sentiment, which reigns true, aside from your guys'...
Not we'll see, this is happening. This really is happening, we're having meetings, we, we've talked with these people.
Well, yeah, certainly. I, you know what I mean, people are showing up and stuff too, we know what's happening. I mean, we see it, we see the influx of people here every day. We all drive the roads, I mean, give me a break, come on now, we get it. We see you guys are doing, like you said, what's her name, doing a good job putting all this stuff out there, which I think she's done a, a decent job. Um, but that doesn't mean that we don't have a right as citizens to be concerned about how the job is taking place, and how it's gonna be here for the big picture, not just for the, "Okay, we got 50 grand, we're gonna make all this investment," but then how... You know, at the beginning, when you took place, you know, you talked about how we, you know, like you said, the boardwalk and the third, and this, that, and the other. I just think, if you keep on visiting, that's important, that you made a stance that you wanted to see some of this be retained for city investment, you know, for city use, for people that live here that pay taxes and pay the exorbitant water be, fees.
And I said that, I just said that.
And it sounds like it's very...
And the park is proposed to be kinda where the fenced-off area is right now.
But you also proposed a ferry, so where...
That would be at the end Shawna, it takes about one, so you need to just be patient, okay? We're, we're getting stuff together, it takes about an acre of parking, and there's a lagoon down there where they used to pull the logs up.
Well, I think the big...
We're over five minutes, and I gotta...
I know, I, it's alright, alright, I just wanted to say, I think the big...
If you wanna call me, you can, okay?
I won't email you, but I will, um, I, but the big concern is, is that I just think that, you know, they're here, people are showing up. People do care, they want to make sure that you guys do what they're gonna do.
Please call me, please call me. Yep. Okay, any other visitor comments? Well, that's a long session on this visitor comments.
Visitor comments are wonderful, and it's the one way, if, if you're critics of the council, it's the one way we grow. It's the only way we grow. We need your criticism. And it's certainly valued by me, and I know it's valued by the rest of the council as well. Sometimes, sometimes it's hard to take, but it's the way we grow. It's the way we become aware, and it helps us make the good decisions.
Yep, and now we're gonna make a decision, 'cause we got deliberations, planned development overlay zone of 34759 Sykes Road, Kessi Engineering and Consulting. So, um...
Good segue.
Yeah, so, um, you know, this is a, it's called an overlay, right, Jen? An overlay, and, uh, I found it very interesting that, uh, it, it's a way to make use of the, um, when I got out of it was, uh, the, the power was an issue, um, that could have, the overhead power from the VPA and the wetlands, and that this is making the use of the maximum amount of that property, and leaving the 50-foot buffer of all the wetlands. So, 50 foot completely away, um, sounds like a good deal to me. Anybody else got any deliberations on this?
I appreciate that there's a larger boundary for the wetland, wetlands, larger buffer. I know, that makes it a lot harder, but I think it makes it a lot more acceptable to the public, too.
One of the more straightforward approaches, dealing with all the issues that you had to deal with out there in terms of design, and working around the wetland, working around all of those obstacles. Uh, I think it's, to me, it's flawless.
Yeah, I was just gonna speak to a comment to our, um, the flexibility, our code, having this planned unit, or planned residential development overlay is really a tool for flexibility for things with encumbrances such as wetlands, odd-shaped lots, um, weird street alignments, and this proposal has all of those things, and it's just kind of a perfect fit for an overlay project, or a planned unit, offered that flexibility to adjust lot shapes and, you know, it doesn't have a net more lots, or it's not, not more net houses, it just shifts those densities around and clusters.
Glad you persevered.
Keith?
I'm good to go.
Jenny?
Um, I wasn't here for the testimony, but I did, um, hear all the testimony at the planning commission, so, um, and the planning commission made the recommendation, so that's...
Yes, yes. Good point. So?
Do you wanna motion?
Yes, I'm waiting.
Okay, move, we support the planning commission's recommendation.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve the planning commission's recommendation of rezoning the, uh, an overlay zone on the property at 34759 Sykes Road. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Okay, ordinance number 3226, and ordinance to annex and designate the zone of certain property at 2130 Gable Road.
Move, we adopt ordinance number 3226.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve ordinance number 3226. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Okay, uh, ordinance first reading, ordinance number 3222, and ordinance vacating a portion of North First Street right of way, and reserving public utility and construction easement. Okay, resolution number 1811, a resolution of the com- Okay, resolution number eighteen, eleven, a resolution of the common council of the city of St. Helens, Oregon, adopting supplemental budget for making appropriations for fiscal year two thousand seventeen, eighteen.
I move we adopt resolution number eighteen, eleven as read.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve resolution eighteen, eleven as read. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, resolution eighteen, twelve, a resolution to support the feasibility study for ferry services from St. Helens, Oregon to Washington State.
Move we adopt resolution number eighteen, twelve.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve resolution eighteen, twelve. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Okay, public comments, uh, proposed increase in garbage and recycling rates. Any public comments?
I would note that we have someone from Hudson Garbage to talk about it if we need to.
Okay. Anybody? Okay, hearing none. Resolution number eighteen, thirteen, a resolution establishing garbage and recycling rates in superseding resolution seventeen, ninety-two.
Move we adopt resolution number eighteen, thirteen.
Second.
Okay, motion's been set, made and seconded to approve a resolution eighteen, thirteen. All in favor?
Question?
Yep.
Uh, I asked that question, uh, to them today about adjustments if things change on the national scene. If they are prepared to go back to original rates. And all basically with Hudson Garbage, the best they could do was to say, well, we have, have had a good track record in the past. And, um, I believe they have and, and Keith would know as well as I do.
They have.
If they have had a, a good track record in the past. So I just wanted to assure citizens, in a sense, that we asked that question. If the rates are going to go higher because China will not be taking the recycled products, uh, anymore for, could that be temporary? And so we asked that question about would the rates go back to what they originally are now? So, uh, know that we asked the question. Know that, um, uh, there's a vote of confidence with Hudson Garbage that they're trying to do what they can do. And they are one of the only garbage services in, around the state. From what they testified is that they're going to continue recycling. And it isn't all going to go into a garbage landfill like many municipalities are doing. So I, I was taken by that. I was like, wow, that's, 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 that's pretty good. That's, that's a pretty good gesture. Uh, especially from, from my point. Anyway, I just wanted to clarify that.
Yep.
So, uh, so people knew what the, how the garbage rates were, uh, why they were going up. Uh, just in case you missed, uh, that council session this morning, like there wasn't too many people here, so I know you did miss it, but you, you, you could uh, ascertain those records, uh, through Comcast and, um, and through our city recorder. Thank you.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to, um, approve resolution eighteen, thirteen. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Okay, approve and authorize for signature, uh, agreement with Miller Construction and Engineering, Inc. for professional structural engineering service.
I move, go ahead.
Move we approve and authorize for signature, A as read?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve, A, A as read. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Okay, consent agenda for acceptance, A, planning commission minutes dated February thirteenth, two thousand eighteen.
Move we approve nine consent agenda for acceptance?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve consent agenda, A, um, nine. All in fav, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, consent agenda for approval, uh, A, work session, executive session, public carrying and regular session minutes dated March seventh and twenty-first, two thousand eighteen. B, declare surplus property, water filtration facility equipment. C, street closure request for, uh, Monty Center and Race Against Child Abuse. D, LCC license. E, accounts payable bill list. That's it.
Move we approve consent agenda for approval, A through E as read?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve ten, A through E as read. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, um, so it's good to see the kids out here tonight. You can see a little bit of democracy here tonight. Um, you know, we've had a little bit of, uh, um, it, it, that's one thing that's beautiful about it is, uh, when you disagree with, with something, um, you, uh, come and you try to, uh, make sense of what's going on, um, and, uh, try to educate yourself with the facts and, 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 and come forward and, uh, and that's what we do. Um, and, and, and we try to push it out there as much as we can, but we do have a tough time and I just want, you know, that, uh, um, there's a lot of people in this community that are very loving. I'd like to welcome you to our community, um, you know, a couple of years. Um, we, we do welcome people a, as a council and we do welcome business. We are really just trying to, we've heard that, uh, I've heard that, you know, we're not business friendly and, um, the council has heard that too and, and we're just trying to, you know, let you know that we're, we're no different than you, you know, we struggle too on a daily basis. I'm, I own a small business and it's not easy. If it was, everybody would do it, you know, and, uh, so that's, you know, I guess touched my heart more than, you know, um, when, when people showed up, it's like, wow, you know, I ain't alone, you know, I got, I gotta go do the work. I gotta bill it. I gotta, I gotta, uh, pay my taxes. I gotta do all, you know, everything around it. So, um, and, and it's the American dream. It really is. I love America. I love this city. And, uh, you know, for to have a few people, and I, Facebook is just mean. I gotta say that. To have a few people out there just continuing to, um, not be a part of that. And the silent majority, and I do mean majority, um, that are loving and good people, um, you know, they'll read it and maybe laugh and maybe throw, every once in a while I get caught up in it too. I'm not perfect. And that's one thing I need to state for, for the record is I am not perfect and please excuse me for my future shortcomings. Because I will have some. And if I have had any and I've offended you, I apologize sincerely. So, um, you know, this thing is just really crazy. Um, I'm new to politics, but I do agree with Doug that, um, it does make us stronger and look at and check our motives. And, uh, so I appreciate you being here tonight. So, um, with that, I'm going to go with, uh, Council President Morton.
I've got some exciting news. And it deals with our parks and it deals with a couple, um, uh, testimonies, uh, that we heard.
Yes.
And that deals with, uh, Sand Island. Now, if you really want to hear the particulars, we have a parks commission meeting next Monday. And there'll be a proposal for, I mean, a huge proposal for Sand Island.
Yep.
I can't tell you what it is now until our commission hears it and whatever, but it is exciting and it will.
Is public, open to the public.
Yeah, if we go forward, it will have a profound effect on our waterfront area and our, um, uh, en- entire maritime, uh, environment. So that's exciting. McCormick Park is exciting because the veterans is putting in a, uh, nearly, and the city and, uh, volunteers in the community, uh, engineering groups and that kind of thing are all combining to an over a hundred thousand dollar facelift on our Veterans Plaza. Uh, it's, it's, it's going to be good. So that's going to be another thing. That's going to be another kind of a sneak preview. And the, uh, commission is going to take a look at that. Um, there's kind of a lot going on with the parks and I'm excited about that. So I oversee parks, uh, oversee public works and, uh, if you have any questions about public works in particular, I'd, I'd, I'd really like you to get ahold of me. And, uh, Doug Morton, and so if you care to, I will answer my phone, answer my emails, uh, soon and respond to you as soon as I possibly can. Okay?
Thanks, Doug. Counselor Con.
Um, I don't have anything in addition to the report that I made earlier today, but I do want to welcome everybody and thank you for coming in. Thank you for making comments. This is the forum to be heard and we appreciate you. We're all here to, to try and do our best. And you, you improve that. Thank you.
Thanks, Susan. Counselor Locke?
Uh, nothing to add from today.
Okay.
I'm good.
Counselor Carlson?
Um, I missed the meeting earlier. I had other commitments, but, um, I do appreciate the feedback. I share some of the sentiments that were shared tonight and even though you're just here tonight, a lot of those concerns about, you know, year-round Halloween, development on the waterfront, public access are things that are, have been debated on this council for four years. Um, maintaining the public access to waterfront, maintaining the livability of our community. So even though it wasn't talked about tonight, it is something that has been hotly contested in every step of the way in this planning process. So just know that it is forefront in our mind that the people that live here, you know, have an expectation that that is their park and that that is their place and that they will have a space in the development when it's completed, that it's not an us or them, it's everybody together. Um, I'm getting started for my annual, um, National Alliance Mental Illness Does fundraiser for May. And I'll be participating in that. I am also participating in, um, a group event that is regards to rural that I've done for the last seven or eight years. And this is first year they're bringing it to Portland and it's bridging the gap between rural and city divide. It's the first time they've ever done a rural event in Portland. Is trying to find things that we share together that we can better find solutions instead of being an us or them. And I think I'm looking forward to that. Um, I'm also this week working with Public Health to start, um, a real cancer support network for our community. Um, they're going to be sponsoring and leading walks in our community, um, four days a week for survivors, family members and people affected by cancer. Um, it's all free and Public Health is sponsoring it with information and guides and support. Um, it's really hard if you're dealing with cancer, either of a loved one or yourself to, now I have to go to Portland to find support, you know, it's like you, it's hard enough to get to treatment. It'd be nice to just be able to come to the park and have people that share the struggle that you're going through and somebody to listen. So getting excited about that. So I think the spring has a lot of good stuff coming and I just look forward to hopefully seeing a lot of these faces continue to participate in our government and in our things that are coming up because we can make better decisions together than in isolation. That's all I have.
I have a go back, if you want.
Yeah, you can have a go back.
Since Jenny talked. So this is my eighteenth year on the council and, uh, we've been working on the waterfront for eighteen years. And, uh, lots of things going on, whatnot, and Doug started eleven years ago, I think, something like that. And, uh, one of the first things we did, Doug and I, we, we took a city map and we, we drew an overlay on this mill property, which was still running at the time. And we brought it in here in a meeting with, the mill manager was in here at that meeting and boy, did we get an earful, I'll tell you that. So, uh, it, this, uh, it's, it's something that we don't take lightly and we've been looking at for a long time and we've had lots of input on and uh, lots of ideas and just, it's something that, it's a process and we, we have, you know, thirteen thousand people in our community and they all have an idea. They're not all the same.
And Keith, that was a, that was a, a plan for our waterfront master plan. And you and I took books and went back for testimonies of what people and committees wanted uh, over the last twenty years, twenty-five years of what they wanted on the waterfront. And we drew all those things in and we put it up in this council room. I'll never forget, that door opened and two or three people came in and says, what in the, what's going on here? Well, we just took testimony of what people in, over the last twenty-five, thirty years had testified for and what their ideas were and we put them all up there on a plan. It looks pretty much like what's out there, what's, what's been proposed now. So in many senses, um, it has been on the front burner, uh, totally. I mean, continually.
And actually, uh, twenty-five years ago, I was on the first waterfront committee. I, I actually don't think that was the first one. I think they've been having them for hundreds of years, but, uh, I was on waterfront committee twenty-five years ago and I, before I got on the council, so. We had started with ideas back then and that's what we were talking about. We threw all those ideas on a, on a piece of paper and threw them out there and they're, they're actually coming around now, so. You always hear the story, government's slow.
Slower than you know.
That was my, my eye opener.
But it's moving forward.
It is moving forward. We're actually, we're actually moving pretty good. I've watched other council meetings because I had to see, uh, this is the way it goes and it is the way it goes. Uh, youth counselor, David?
Uh, so I was not able to attend our Monday meeting, but I was kept informed on what we had talked about. Uh, so I'm sorry if I mispronounced these names, but we had Al and Kanika Peterson, who brought us fly, uh, two flyers, uh, where one of the flyers was talking about the Earth Day pickup and we could pass them out to high school as well as the blues and folk music workshop.
And that Earth Day is April twenty-seventh, is that right? Twenty-first. Huh? Am I right? Twenty-second. Oh, I said twenty-second. Oh, Earth Day is April twenty-first.
The cleanup.
The cleanup.
Oh, the cleanup day. Okay, yes, that's what I'm thinking of. So the weekend of the twentieth, twenty-first is, but it's the twenty-first, a Sunday? Oh, okay, I'm looking at the wrong month. All right. Okay, anything else to report, dude?
Uh, earlier today, I went and went to the K O W I radio talk show and talked about chef school.
Nice.
Yeah. I believe it's going to be live Friday.
So you met Marty. He's a good guy.
He's really cool.
Yep, yep. So, okay, thanks. Um, department reports, Terry?
At your, uh, work session coming up in two weeks, uh, we are finally going to have an opportunity to swear in our seventeenth police officer. Uh, Elijah Merkwan is finally, uh, healed. Uh, I don't know if the council was aware that we got midway into this process and he was in a significant car accident and was injured and that kind of put the brakes on this process. He's ready to go. We've put all the final, finishing touches on that process on Monday and, uh, he'll be ready to go. So your next meeting, look forward to him swearing in.
Yeah. Let's go assistant planner, Jen Dizmo. Do you have anything? No? Okay, how about, uh, communications, Crystal Farnsworth? Anything? No? Okay, just checking. Um, our librarian, Margaret?
Thank you.
Library director.
Yeah, I'm one of three librarians. So, some people call me the librarian, but there are others. Um, I just wanted everybody to mark their calendars for April twenty-sixth. That's a Thursday evening at seven. We're going to be hosting Willie Vlauten, who is a Scappus-based author, but he has an international reputation and this year, all the libraries in Columbia County, all five cities as well as Columbia City, which has a, a community library, are coming together for Columbia County Reads and reading the books of Willie Vlauten. And, uh, St. Helens Public Library has selected Lean on Pete. And this book, um, takes place in part in Portland at the Portland Meadows Racetrack. And it's a story of a young boy who has a lot of adversity, but Lean on Pete is the horse that he, um, becomes attached to when he doesn't have the kind of supports that he needs to have, uh, as they put it, uh, a home, food on the table and a high school he can attend for more than part of. uh, a home, food on the table and a high school he can attend for more than part of a year. So it's a very, um, uh, interesting story of resilience and we have lots of copies at the library. Come by and check one out and read it and be ready to, uh, join a conversation with Willie. Um, ordinarily, um, we have a book group, um, that would meet, but we're combining the book group with Willie's Visit and Columbia County Reads and what we'll do is, uh, move all the computers out of the way and put in a big circle of comfortable chairs and Willie will join the circle and we'll talk about his book and the writing life, so it should be interesting and I welcome you to come, even if you don't get the book finished in time, come and I think you'll be, um, uh, inclined to, uh, read more of his books. This book, by the way, was just made into a film, um, by a, um, producer in the United Kingdom and it was, um, released recently and was part of the Portland International Film Festival, so I got to go see it and that was, um, really, um, made me, uh, interested in reading all the rest of his books. Another of which has also been made into a movie with Dakota Fanning, so, um, I think he's kind of a local secret for a lot of people, but, you know, this will be your chance to meet him and hear more about his, uh, writing career, so that's all I have.
Thank you. Financial Director Matt Brown.
Uh, just a reminder for tomorrow is the Budget Committee meeting, starts at six o'clock here in this room. Um, so invite any of you that are interested in how the budget for the city, um, gets discussed, um, but that's all I have.
Kathy Payne? John Walsh? So the administrator.
So there's, yeah, a lot of dialogue today about, uh, the waterfront and tourism and events and things and I'm sitting here thinking about, what if we hadn't, you know, what if, what if the city hadn't made that ramp up in tourism, what if we didn't get involved with the acquisition of the waterfront? Where we might be looking at right now and I, I think we wouldn't have a lot. We've, we've done so much work on the waterfront, it's been such a priority, I mean, you know, the city's involvement in the waterfront is to ensure that there's public access, I mean, there's, i- the contrary position would be that a private developer buys the whole site and the city's negotiating for those access pieces and doesn't have that level of, um, public interest. And then, so providing that public access, ensuring that the connection to the road network goes through, the tra- the trails that we, we wanna see. Um, and, and really that catalytic investment stimulus for the local economy, getting those densities and the activities down here on the waterfront that's gonna draw people to the community, um, long-term. Um, and part of that is this tourism and, and some of the, the hotel, um, developer that we've been working with is, his development is so much contingent on these investments in tourism, they, they like what they see, they like the thirteen nights is very important to them, it's gonna drive people here. The activities on the water, some of the maritime things that we've done are, are very important and, you know, Halloween's obviously a, a real, um, it's, it's a hu- huge part of their, their business. And, you know, right now, we're driving thousands of rooms to, of hotel rooms to Portland, I mean, we just can't help it, we don't have the capacity. You know, there's tens of thousands, people are coming here, there's nowhere for them, for them to stay, so we're actively working on doing Airbnb, considering doing Airbnb kinds of campaigns, um, you know, using, utilizing our hotels and we have other hotels looking at creating more, um, more room space, so, um, so, uh, it, it's really exciting, we've been doing a lot of work, it's all just starting to kinda happen, it looks like it's kinda sterile out there, but it's, it's really, really not. And I would also add that anybody that, uh, there was a comment earlier that, about the secret things and me not being available to people. Um, and anybody that works with, knows that my door is open probably far too much, but, but there's people and anybody that comes to the counter, I pretty much talk to, and I, I welcome them to come in, drag out all the waterfront posters and that's an open invitation for people to come in and do that, so.
Okay, um, I got one thing to wrap up on that, and, uh, this came from a testimony as well. And it dealt with, uh, our vision for the waterfront, we had three goals, uh, that fit into sustainability, and sustainability was a key word. So the sustainability of the environment, for whatever we do down there should be sustainable with the environment. Whatever we do down there should be sustainable in livability and culture. So that, that gives everyone an opportunity to culturally, uh, participate in that area and, and, uh, meet all the needs of quality life issues. Then the other one, and probably the most important that we're all looking forward to is the business and commercial sector, sustainability in business and commercial. So those three areas with that tripod of sustainability is what drove all of us, I think, to make the decisions that we have made thus far. So we'll continue and just know that that's our goals.
Anybody else? Um, with the, any of the kids from Keith Mussum's class have any questions before they take off for the council? Okay. Any other kids?
They're running.
Alright, well, it's good to see you guys here. Where adjourned? I can talk, I know a guy.